Approve the.
Hey, we are up to you.
Is Kyle on?
Thank you.
He is.
Kyle, are you on?
Yep, I'm back.
Okay, we're doing a little of taxes on Maplewood Apartments. Uh, Plath makes the motion, Carter seconded, any discussion? Hearing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. Correct, Kyle?
Aye.
Yep. Thank you. Right, granted, they still couldn't read it.
Okay. I'm trying to bring it nicely.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Bill.
Go ahead, Doug.
Alright, yes, um, first item, the, uh, resurfacing projects, they are in your electronic folder. We have three of them this year, a one-mile stretch of P twenty between McGregor and US eighteen, and then the Lots Creek Road, and then there's a three-mile, uh, a little bit over three miles of resurfacing south of Lone Rock. They were let in at the Department of Transportation last Tuesday. We have received the bids. The, uh, low bid was from Heartland Asphalt for three million four hundred four thousand three hundred fourteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. The engineer's estimate was three million five hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred forty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. So it's a little bit less than what, uh, what we had estimated. There is farm market, since it was let in through the DOT, uh, we are using electronic, uh, all-electronic filing system for that. So this resolution would be to award the contract, and then also, once all the required paperwork, uh, is returned to our office, allow me to, uh, sign that on behalf of Cassoot County.
The resolution number would be oh-three, twenty-eight, twenty-three, oh-four. You have the resolution in front of you on your folder. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution? Motion by Plath? Second by Carter? Any questions on the resolution? Seeing none? Do a roll call both, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes. Motion carried unanimous, and I will sign it.
Sticky.
Don't hurt yourself.
Don't hurt yourself.
No, it wasn't gonna hurt me, it was gonna hurt somebody behind there. Thank you. Perfect.
Okay, construction in the road right away, we do have, um, a few, uh, items there. Uh, the first one would be, uh, a request from Andrew and Andrew Louts and Lead Yard Windpower. They'd like to outlet a six-inch roof drain into the south right way of one-seven-zero-two-four-sixtieth Street. Uh, this is the, this is a building that's being used to, that it's being constructed and is being used to control the Lead Yard Wind Farm project. Uh, they just wanted to get the, uh, roof drains and outlet them into the road ditch. Uh, we do have an agreement that does get, uh, recorded for this. Just, uh, we will allow them to outlet this into the road ditch, however, we will not necessarily ensure that it's going to drain. Um, will not be held, uh, responsible for any, uh, any problems for that way. We've had everything, um, returned to us signed and notarized correctly. This is something that we've done in the past. I would recommend that the board would approve of this, uh, application and request as well.
Hey, Roger and Doug, I got a question.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, I know we've allowed outletting into the road ditch on a few other occasions, but is there a reason that they cannot go straight to the drainage district ditch? It looks like it's fairly close, and, um, the same owner?
I guess we did not ask for this, that.
I, I was, uh, I was just, yeah, with a curious question in mind too, being the drainage just runs through the farm.
I suppose this was the simplest way to do it.
Probably. Cost-effective for them.
Right, and it is not a big deal if it's... If they accept the fact that it might not drain as good as if they had it hooked to a tile, I have, don't have an issue with it.
Right.
I would move to approve the permit for migrating, uh, zero-three.
This was Andrew Louts.
Yeah, Andrew, yeah, Louts.
Okay, I got the wrong one. Andrew Louts. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. Right, Mr. Stecker?
I would, I would oppose it.
Okay. One opposed. Which one do you have next? Hellman?
Just a second, I'm putting my notes together.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, yeah, Hellman, uh, Tom Hellman, um, has requested, um, to cross the road right away, uh, three-hundred-fortieth Street. Currently, there is a tile that crosses three-hundred-fortieth Street, however, a part of it is underneath of those trees there on the Ray property. I think also there may be some private tile going in on the Goshi side that Hellman may be participating in. What, uh, Tom is requesting is that, that, uh, crossing be moved so it would be more efficient, effective, wouldn't be claw, uh, getting clogged up with, uh, tree roots. He has provided all the necessary, uh, information to the road department. Uh, we would provide the material for this particular, uh, crossing, as well as two-hundred-fifty dollars towards labor, and that's Cassoot County's policy. And I would recommend that the board would approve this, uh, request as well.
Do I have a motion to approve Tom Hellman?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Stecker makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Carter? Second submotion, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Is that for or against?
In support.
Okay.
So that it was all, all aye?
Yeah.
I'll get these two signed now, Roger, if you can please. So here's that one. And this one is both Tammy and you. And it needs to be notarized, I will notarize that. Thank you.
And then I think there's one more, uh, this is just for, uh, discussion purposes, but, uh, I think the gentleman's name is Mike Redding, uh, for the Claire Redding Land in twenty-four, uh, that's Garfield Township. Uh, they would like to cross Sixtieth Avenue twice. Uh, they have been participating with freeders to get a tile main brought up to that road, um, and then also so they could drain, uh, their land there. Um, I, we've been out, looked at it, we do not have any concerns, however, we're waiting for some, uh, information to come back on the application. So, I guess, I'm just, if the board would have concerns about that, if you could let me know if they would bring this stuff back. And prior to a board meeting, does the board have any concerns of me giving them a verbal, uh, a verbal permission to go ahead and cross that roadway?
It's all private tile.
It is all private.
Uh, I don't have a problem with it anyway.
Okay. Very good. That, uh, completes all the construction in the road right of way. As far as discussion, um, the secondary road Dutch, uh, DOT budget and program needs to be, uh, submitted by April fifteenth. I pretty much have the, uh, budget and program, the DOT budget and program completed. And I would like to present this either on the fourth or the eleventh of April. I'm just curious if you, this takes about an hour. I just want to make sure there is not any other conflicts on those days.
The fourth, we have the, um, max tax levy hearing, but that takes about five minutes.
Right, okay.
So, um...
Is there any other drainage hearings or anything scheduled?
We have a teleconference with Winnebago County to consider, uh, updated reclassification. And that says five minutes, but...
How about on the eleventh, Tammy?
It does look like we have quite a few things. The eleventh is completely empty right now.
I'm gonna shoot for the eleventh on that day. So, I'll present that on the eleventh. Uh, construction projects, right now, everything is still waiting for weather to, uh, to allow them, allow everybody to work. We still have open positions at the mechanic shop, two of them. Uh, road condition, last week when I spoke to you, uh, spoke about the end of the week prior and the conditions of the gravel roads. Very happy to say that they improved greatly over that weekend. I went out that Tuesday afternoon and was able to, uh, drive a lot better on those gravel roads. Uh, we still are maintaining them, um, getting gravel hauled on them, getting them in shape. And knock on wood, I hope that everything will, um, will continue to, uh, heal satisfactory, but I do want to say publicly, thank you to the road department, all the operators, all the mechanics, my foreman, my assistant foreman, thank you very much for all the work that they, uh, have done in the last week and, uh, over the winter. Uh, I think everything went well, so thank you.
I had a couple thank yous for gravel hauled and rock hauled, they appreciated, uh, roads being fixed, so...
It takes a little bit of time, but we, I think our road crew did a worthy job, so...
We had to drive up gravel yesterday, it's really nice.
Good, thank you.
I know going out to, to the Chambers Farm yesterday, southwest of Corvus, I mean, that road was horrible last week, or the last couple weeks, and then yet, the last couple days, it's been, it's been perfect. I mean, it's a great road, so, yeah.
Good.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Doug.
Good. Uh... When we decide to do the budget amendment, I will be putting some things in there for the road department. Uh, no update on the letting of the airport expansion at this time. I know plans are out there, I don't even know what date it is, I might, I think I'll find out on that, uh, find out the date of letting. And then next week, I do have a meeting with, uh, UP Union Pacific Railroad. They will be installing some safety signals at, I think it's three Cassoot County intersections, so, a couple weeks, we'll know a little bit more about that. Planning and zoning, um, the commission is going to have a meeting on April third, which is next week, at three o'clock, uh, to discuss and, and get a report, uh, forwarded, get a report ready for, to be forwarded to the board supervisors on the proposed ordinance. And then, um, working on a landfill post-closure report. Uh, Tammy, do you know anything, is the audit for fiscal twenty-two, is that on schedule or hasn't been filed yet?
She is just waiting for three attorney letters that she has not received back yet.
Okay.
I need to talk to Todd about that, cause he's one of them, so...
Okay.
That's all she's waiting for.
When that gets filed, would you please let me know, and then we'll be ready to give that post-closure report.
Yes.
Other than that, that's all that I have.
Anton Bridge. Couple people told me it's pretty rough, the one over the sloop by Anton.
The, the north end?
Yeah, Anton's Blacktop.
Yeah.
You might wanna put slow signs up or something, there's a pretty good bump there, the frost must have heaved one side.
Okay.
And the other one's a four-way bridge, I had a couple complaints that it needs rocking in, but that's going to be...
I'm sure, but I, I'm sure Scott knows about it, and we're taking care of it, but I will remind him again.
Yeah.
I'll remind Dale too, cause he kinda takes care of that big six bridge, so...
Yeah.
Thank you.
They, they're, those are gonna take a lot of care now.
Uh, from last week, I guess, were we gonna go anywhere with the gentleman that was in for wanting rock?
He got it, it's all done, I, I drove over it the other day, it's great.
I drove it Tuesday afternoon, and... Fairly confident that fifty-five miles an hour is very safe, Carter. I did check that.
Okay, I just wanted to follow that.
Yeah, I drove my seventy-nine Ford over it fifty-five miles an hour, and it doesn't have tight steering. It was, it was better than Winnebago's I talked about.
Alright, I just was wondering how that turned out.
No, I want to look through.
Uh, ju, just to be specific, J. Mayland?
Correct. Yep.
Yes, I drove, I think that's three-hundred-ninetieth Street?
Yeah.
That afternoon.
Um, we did get a picture of one of the school buses that went in the ditches, one of the ditches, uh, intersection.
Merrill Mueller sends a picture.
I guess I did not receive that.
Uh, there's a school bus that went in the ditch, uh, Thursday morning.
How did you receive the photo?
By text message.
Via text message.
Would anyone feel?
Let's forward it to them.
Yeah, with somebody, I mean, I, I have no idea about...
That was my understanding that you were aware of that, dude, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I, I do not know...
Okay.
Uh, what you are talking about, so if you could please forward me the...
But that's not the issue, I don't think, I just, I mean, it's the issue, but...
The question, the question was made, you know, why don't we do sand at the intersections anymore?
That's the one.
Went in on the ice?
Uh, as far as I know, is it slid through the intersection and went into the ditch. I don't, I don't know that it was in an intersection, I think it was, or, let me pull the picture back up.
But I think just, I mean, that was just a generic question, do we, do we sand, I think I asked you this before, but, at some point, do we, do use any sand on any of the roads at the moment currently, or, or intersections, or curbs, or...
I, I think you're referring, you're referring to our snow ordinance?
Correct.
Snow removal ordinance?
Correct.
And we do, after an initial snow removal, we do sand some, not necessarily all, of the roadway, but some, yes, in intersection seals and different things.
I got the picture pulled up here, but, um, it was not at an intersection, but it is on a blacktop.
Well, they're not gonna sand the whole blacktop?
No.
You can't, you can't do that in the county, we'd, we'd run out of sand so quick.
I was thinking it was at an intersection, so...
I, I did not receive that text message, and if somebody would, I'll, I'll, I'll reply to Merrill, I visited with Merrill before.
I just wanted to bring it over to the air, John, you know, it was brought to our attention, I'm, I'm sorry you didn't receive that, too. I will make sure to forward that to you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Doug?
Did not, thank you, Doug, appreciate it.
Thanks, Doug.
Everybody have a good, good day.
You too.
We are going to switch hats and go into drainage, our favorite subject. We are up to appoint commissioners for DB four lateral twenty-eight reclassification, did you have somebody in mind?
Yes, uh, Tim Stricker and Rich Rosenmeyer.
Yep. Do I have a motion to appoint Tim Stricker and Rich Rosenmeyer?
So moved.
I'll make that motion.
Kyle can have it.
Okay, Kyle? You second it?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor to appoint commissioners, is there any questions? Any comments? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Alright, aye.
Aye. Stecker?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. We are up to discussion with Idell's Cassoot County twenty-eighty agreement amended for wetland projects. Marge?
Did you get a chance to review that?
No, I didn't.
I think it's in there. In the drainage folder?
It was.
Yeah.
Oh, I seen that.
Now, now that I see the, the email, are the, yeah, I seen it.
They just want to add saturated boulders to the wetland project, that, um, everything else stays the same?
Yep.
The current one, and Idell's will reimburse Randy Engineering for that.
Okay.
They just want to add that to that, so, if you agree with all that, then they'll, they'll write it up and do a final draft and present us something, if you want something else added or taken away.
There's no negativity to it, to the drainage districts, so I would suggest probably that we do it. Does anybody have any issues with it?
Okay, so I'll send a message back to Idell, said it's okay, and they'll, they'll send us a regular final draft.
We'll make a motion and okay it. Or do you want the final draft?
It's just a review, so...
Then, you're gonna put it back on the agenda, I guess, if my...
Yes, to approve it.
Yeah, no, it's...
Yep.
To go ahead and let Marge, by unanimous consent of the board, without a motion.
That's fine.
Yep. Anything else?
Repairs?
We are, request. Marge, wanna hand out, um, Mr. Stecker's, you wanna hang on to him until he comes back, cause I don't think anybody's gonna do anything right away anyhow.
Okay, yes, I can.
They all his?
Nope, Carter got one today.
Well, Carter got one.
If, if you want to approve them, I can sign them when I come back, or we can handle them next week, it doesn't matter, but...
You want us to, uh...
Since they're already on the agenda, we could do them.
If it's alright with you, Mr. Stecker, we will approve the request for repairs, and you can sign them when you get back and take care of them, and designate the contractor?
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
And just for an update, I got a call from Jeff Dietering, um, yesterday about a washout, so we'll get paperwork made up for that, but he'd like it fixed as soon as possible, so we'll get that in the works as well. But that'll be coming for next week or the week after, whenever we can get the paperwork.
Okay, well, I'll get her fixed. Do I have a motion for the supervisors to do their repairs?
I'm, let, gotta explain them first.
Yeah, you gotta read them.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Request repair, section two of Irvington Township. And it's need outlet pipes at flight locations, misdering dip out, from Dave Rosenmeyer.
District drainage number two with the title.
There ain't no drainage district number one?
One oh five.
One, one oh five.
Do you wanna have it fixed?
You can think about it, or you can just... Raisles did the re, the dip out.
Okay, if Raisles do it, we got the road department do it.
Uh, I'll get back to you on it. Yeah. I'll get back to you on it.
Okay.
And Mr. Stecker had two repairs. And, he's on my iPad, just went crazy.
Do you wanna read them, Roger, or do you want me to?
Yeah, I'll get them, my iPad just went off. Repair request on T, try eighty-four, and repair request on drain four.
Yeah, so number, number two is on try eighty-four about trees needing removal from Lauren Meyer. And then, number three is on drain four, lap thirty-seven, is two spots on, two spots or three on broken tile, there's flags from Tim Erkelding.
You got any idea who you want to do them ahead of time, Con?
Um, the trees will probably have B and W take a look at them and get them sprayed, I believe they've already been contacted about it previously, um, because there was a request from twenty-twenty-two also. And then, the one for the request number three, I'll go look at that and get it figured out and get back to Marge.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the supervisor to take care of their drainage repair requests?
So moved.
Motion by Whacter? Second by, Carter? Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried unanimous. Anything else, Marge, for drainage?
Um, not that much, except for a nice email we got from, um, Steve, Steve Minke.
Well, it actually come from Phil.
That's it, okay. Yeah.
Did you forward it to the rest of us?
Sorry.
Yeah, I don't believe that I retrieved that.
I didn't, I don't think.
Todd sent it to me, it was pretty much to Nick and...
Marge, what did you do wrong?
Everything. I believe the information he has given doesn't understand what it is, and keeps asking for more of the same, we've given him what he's asked.
Oh, wow. Well, thank you, Marge, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Giving you a hard time.
Thank you very much, Marge. Thank you. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Marge.
Okay, I did forward you the email that I got from Todd Holmes yesterday, um, that was sent to Nick and I regarding the letter. That's speaking of Minke filed with IPIB. So feel free to read that. Next week, we have the max tax levy at eight-thirty in the morning, we have a joint teleconference with Winnebago County to consider approval for the updated reclassification report. We have a joint teleconference with Winnebago County to consider approval for the updated reclassification report on WK sixty-eight dash one thirty-six main open ditch and lateral two open ditch and set a public hearing. We have approval of a GPS account for board supervisors. We have approved the resolution for the max, max tax levy. And that is it so far for next week. Um, let's see, I don't think I have a lot right now, um. It's nice to have the budget done, I'm busy, um, certifying city budgets that are now coming in. Usually city budgets are due March thirty-first, but, but because of the valuation thing, there's, also have been extended to April thirtieth. So I'm busy certifying those and, um, all the other budgets that are coming in, so that's all I have.
Jack, do you have anything?
Early childhood, North Central Iowa meeting yesterday morning. First, uh, we had the, uh, finance committee meeting, went over the balance sheets, paying the request, category sheets. Reviewed the twenty twenty-three budget, uh, reviewed the F Y twenty-four draft of funds. And, uh, dropped them out, uh, request for programming. Wasn't gonna be going out, I certainly gotta be back in. Reviewed the literacy, lit literacy grant updates, tuition assistance update. Then went into the general, general meeting, had a few new peoples, so we had some introductions, uh, finance committee gave their report from the finance meeting, approved our budget expenditures. Had a couple changes to a couple policy procedures that we had to improve. Reviewed the board professional plan. And did, uh, doing the directory evaluation, that means we turned back in. Approved the RFP release, the request for programming release. Acknowledged program review and audits. And administrator, she went through the tuition assistance, literacy grants, the governor's allocation proposal for F Y twenty-four, which, could potentially get a six point eight percent increase in funding. Then there's some conferences, there's a, that childhood conference that she, she, she can attend, the drug endangered conference, she can, uh, attend early childhood night in Iowa Lexi College. And then the, um, you and Walter. People that talk to the legislators down there, you know, through some of that, and then some of the programs are reported, we have the county public health and Mitsu. Next meeting is April twenty-fourth for the advisory meeting of the programs and then the board meeting is May twenty-second.
Carter?
I had a, North Iowa Community Action Organization Board meeting on the last Tuesday evening and had a dinner. And, um, a meeting over at the Community Action Building in Mason City. It was their first meeting of the year, so going through a lot of training and informational things for new board members. Myself along with two others who are brand new to the board, so, um, so good to meet everyone over there and, uh, they, for this year, um, they have, they're generally adding a dental advocate for Head Start children. They currently use nine point seven of a three million dollar grant, a three and a half million dollar grant, um, that they receive from Head Start. And they've used one point nine million dollars, uh, to help low income energy assistance for families. So between the two, about five and a half million out of their seven point three million dollars total goes to, between Head Start and, uh, low income energy assistance. And Head Start is definitely the biggest program that they do, and so fifty, fifty-seventh year of doing it. Um, they are closing down the I Smile program, just, that's, that program's kinda going by the wayside with, um, with the children in North Iowa, just between, nobody running it and, and the funding not being there for, and changing the program around, so they're doing away with that and adding other things. And, uh, this coming year, they're not sure their exact number, but they will be decreasing in funds due to census. The census having lowered in population that will receive less funding coming here, but, um, other than that, that's, that's all I have from that meeting and, uh, my wife even came with me to that one. She may not come again. And this afternoon I have a connection meeting. I did not have meetings in the last week, but I did talk to some people about the fair grandstands and things like that and, just kinda asking questions of where the money can come from to basically fix those up, yeah. And then, I had my first, uh, set of beaver tails. I think he was actually out of your district, but he contacted me, which is fine.
We're gonna need to be a beaver tail expert.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Stecker, you still on?
Yep, I'm here and, um, on Friday, the twenty-fourth, we have a meeting for Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center. Uh, all of our normal reports and stuff, but probably the thing to highlight here would be, we will have, proposed twenty-eighty changes and bylaw changes coming to the full board to approve in the future. And really the only change there is in the language where it says county should designate a representative and an alternate. We are changing it to may select an alternate, because some counties currently do not do alternates. And, um, it's kind of like the twenty-eighty trying to force their hand and they just don't do it, so we're clarifying the language on that. But otherwise, everything's staying the same, I'd say things are running pretty well in general, but, there's definitely challenges with the current situation of detention in general, as I've highlighted before, but, that's just a heads up, so Tammy, you'll probably get an email from them on that eventually. It might have already come as well, but that's my support.
Okay, I had a conversation with Christina Paradise, she's the one for the pipeline inspection. And they changed the contract with us on what we had suggested. It is a professional we paid within forty-five days of the client receiving payment from the pipeline. It is understood that the county shall forward the invoice for professional services to the pipeline for payment in a timely manner. And that when the county receives payments for the professional services, the county will issue a payment to the professional. And that's how they changed the payment schedule, so they're giving us forty-five days after we receive the money, is that?
Well, we have to approve it, we talked to her about that and she was gonna make those changes, she didn't send that to me, Roger, can you forward that to me or is she gonna forward it to me?
She said she was gonna forward it to you with a agenda request.
Okay, perfect, then I will just wait for that.
Okay, that's fine. And I think that's what we discussed with her when she was here. Unless somebody has something else, that's what we came up with.
Yeah, that, of course, that was the big thing to me, cause I knew it was supposed to be a pass-through and that timeframe was questionable, so that sounds good.
Well, we didn't have, we don't have any way to pay it until we get the money, so.
Yep, exactly.
Yep, so we took care of that. Anything else to come before the good of Cassuth County?
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second?
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes. Yes. You are adjourned, don't have too much fun, Kyle.
I won't.